Comment before the board this evening. All right, then I'll forego the public comments statement, saying none.
Who's cruising?
Chair's report. So the state budget deliberations are set to begin on or about the 18th of July. I did send the board an email regarding an item that they plan to bring back up regarding the authority of the Board of Finance and Board of Alderman to make line item adjustments. So I hope you all saw that and take whatever action you feel is appropriate. Just a reminder that we don't have a committee the whole meeting in July, but we are meeting an executive session on the 24th for Dr. Fieser's evaluation. And then our August board meeting will be not until Monday, August 28th. So I will continue, you know, I'll keep you guys apprised of anything that I hear going on with the budget.
The time for the 24th?
We haven't actually set that yet, so I will email you with the time. I'm not sure if we'll do it, would the board like to start earlier than seven if we can? 6:30?
I don't know.
All right, well, I'll work it out with Dr. Fieser for that.
Can't wait?
All right, Dr. Fieser, I'll turn the meeting over to you to report.
Good evening, everyone. It's nice that the summer has begun. We've had the best days this weekend and today. It's been magnificent. So we are beginning with a year in review. The last few years, we've done this in June, and quite honestly, June just cracked up on us and we didn't, weren't able to pull it all together. So we're doing it this evening. And I need to, I need to pay tribute to Kathy Benetti at the start of this. Kathy and I, and actually Pam had some input as well, kind of sat down and laid everything out with what we wanted in it. But to be honest with you, the whole design of it is Kathy's. So there's some, so some real credit goes there. I can do it if you get a clicker. Pam, you have the clicker?
I've got the clicker.
She's got the clicker. She's got the clicker. Is it hot or?
Oh, no.
Oh, yay. So as I said, now, some of this is going to be very familiar to you because some of this is highlighting things that you are already aware of, but it's just nice to see. And hopefully, it will also be something that's positive for the community as well. So let's begin. Last summer, and you had a presentation on this in the fall, we had 125 projects that were completed, large and small, as you well know. Here, they're listed here, sorry, the glare. You know, so you see there were roofs, abatement projects, fire alarm servicing, et cetera, just going on down the list, and just a myriad of projects that were completed by our buildings and grounds people. Just great, great work. We began the year, 29 new teachers, attended the New Teacher Academy in August, and I think right after that, there were probably six or seven more new teachers, Wendy, if I'm correct on that, came in after the new teacher orientation. We began the year on just under 6,000, 5,881 students, and you see the breakout there by school, or by level, excuse me. And so let's get right into some of the learning. So these are just examples, you know, of what took place in our schools. You know, I know we reported out on this. This was on care of animals, and the, I believe the elephant came and visited Matheson, not a real elephant, but the kids got to go up and see the movements of elephants, et cetera, and the protection of elephants. This was Capen Meadow with respect to, you know, their kindergarten kids getting library cards, a partnership with the Milford Public Library. We had, this is most recently, Pumpkin Delight and their study of South Sudan and the incredible fundraiser that they did to help build toward a well-being built. East Shore Middle School with respect to their geography bee. A sampling of Great Learning was also at, this also was at Matheson, this was Thanksgiving, and kids, you know, really took a look at the history of Thanksgiving and had a Thanksgiving dinner, actually, that took place at the school. Art performances across all levels, and some of them were performed at Parsons. And then, of course, annually, we have the Nutcracker Ballet, which kids in the elementary school, not all kids, I believe it's fourth grade, I think, see that. The art show, which many of you saw, this is just one sample of the incredible artwork that our kids do. This is, this is just, again, the kind of learning that kids have access to. 182 courses offered at our high school. This is the program of studies, this was actually this year's program of studies, and the new one now has come out for 2017. This is the internship program. You should know that we had 22, I'm sorry, 27 sites for internships this year. These were students at both foreign and law, and there were 26 students that actually participated in internships. So it just gives you an idea of just the breadth of opportunities that kids were able to seize upon this year. Kids, this was an example of the computer science program, the pathway that is underway. So this was a group of kids from law who visited Microsoft in New York City. Also, happened to be law kids who went to the inauguration, and I think many of you saw pictures from that experience on the part of kids. This was at Harborside, Sweethearts and Heroes, again, in appreciation to veterans, and there were interactive activities between the students and the guests themselves, and it was really powerful. One of the, one of the, as you can see in the bottom right-hand paragraph, the key person involved in this was a veteran and had, you know, incurred significant burns, et cetera, but the fact that he and fellow veterans were able to interact with kids, et cetera, was just a whole new experience for our kids. This, of course, is Parsons Perks, which if any of you have been here in the mornings, Monday through Friday, and this has just been a hit, an absolute hit. They came back actually this last week, and they're going to be working this month, three days a week, I think. Adult Ed is now, it is growing, and on the left, you see the program from this past year, and on the right, literally hot off the press, is the program for, it's going out to Milford's Public. And in the center is one of the new offerings, which is, is that those people who would like to go and see, I think it's the Brackets. And through Adult Ed, there's that opportunity as well. Some achievements, you know, we always talk about advanced placement, you know, we look at a number of scholars, and our number of scholars continue to increase here. And what you also see is that we have this, it was here.
Yeah, it's in my office.
Oh, okay. Picture taking. Right. For the national, it's a national recognition, so we are a district of distinction. And as you can see, the description here, based on the number of students participating in the AP program, while maintaining, increasing the percentage of students earning AP exam scores of three or better over a three-year period. Our athletic teams, you know, obviously, the state champs in baseball, which you just saw, and the state champion wrestling, that was last season, but great to be able to, to be able to honor them. And then we just learned of the fact that our kids, one, that students on the left made New England's, and then the kids on the right, which I think I wrote you about, are the kids, this is the relay team that went to the Nationals in South Carolina, placed 22nd out of 66 in the nation, in the premier category. It was the toughest, most competitive category. Citywide recognition from our fire department, these are our kids, you saw their posters. State recognition of our schools, these were our two schools of distinction, based upon the percentage of growth that they showed on the Smarter Balance Assessment. Jessica Braxton, who was our kid's governor this year from JFK, and her reign will be given up, I think, in mid-fall, I believe it is. These are our statistics of our graduation and post-secondary, you know, where our kids are going, et cetera. So 97.7% graduation rate in 2016, we don't yet have the 2017 rate, 88-plus percent pursuing post-secondary education programs. This is, kudos to you as a board. You may be wondering, well, how much have we achieved this year? 59 policies to date. You have, you reviewed and examined, which is incredible, and I mean that sincerely, that you deserve a lot of credit for doing this. It's been very, very hard work. It will continue, but we've really made a dent in it, so that's great. So many partnerships, students and staff, this is with United Way, of course, and you know that, you know, both high schools, but all of the schools, we far exceeded our goal, which was 40,000, and actually, it was, and we came in with 45,000 plus, which United Way was sort of blown over by that. Milford Public Library in multiple ways, this was one city, you know, one story, which many of the schools participated in. Again, this was the culminating event that took place at Parsons, where the choir sang. We produced copies of the Constitution of the United States. These were the three books that were for elementary, middle, and high school students that were read by a number of our students. The Dash for Danny, another partnership, and, you know, thousands of runners and, you know, a partnership all across the community, all across the schools. The City of Milford Economic Development Roundtable, we partnered with them this year. We actually were asked to make a presentation to them, if you remember, early last fall, and we did, and brought in a lot of factual information, particularly about both high schools, since there seems to be some huge misunderstandings of, you know, the two high schools, and people thinking that there's huge disparities, et cetera, and it was received very, very well. The Roundtable also, this is another example where West Shore Middle School actually joined with the Milford Prevention Council, and they engaged in a fundraiser walk on behalf of MPC. We had the Superintendents Network, which I'm a member of, from the Connecticut Center for School Change. So this was, 14 superintendents came and did a rounds visit at two of our schools, Harborside and at Matheson, which went very, very well. And then so many more partnerships that you see with Subway, you know, the Mondo Pons, which, you know, sometimes our kids will use, for example, at JFK, and the cleanup that was done there. Milford's Hospital, the Women's Auxiliary, we partner with them every year, and they contribute to some kind of improvement, particularly for our special education students, which is great. The J Row, Smooth Jazz for Concert, the Milford Bank, which sponsored the Stock Market Competition, if you remember, and the kids came about that. Milford Education Foundation, which has done so much, but, you know, one thing, for example, is the Invention Convention, and we had kids, four kids, I believe, who earned a place at the Nationals and actually went to Washington, D.C. Of course, the Chamber of Commerce, we partner with them all the time, and of course, they give 20-plus thousand dollars in scholarships to our students each year. The Downtown Milford Business Association, so our kids, for example, sang during the winter holidays at different corners, you know, at some of the events that took place. And of course, the Boy Scouts of America, the Thanksgiving for Giving, Thanks for Giving Drive, and there's more, but this is just a sample of the kinds of partners that we're involved in. Communication, upcoming events, 81 Weekly Messages, this has probably been one of the most positive things, tribute to Kathy Benetti again, because people go on that site and read it and, you know, kind of know what's going on, both within the school system as well as some pieces, again, that would be in the community, that would be related to kids, would be involved. Materials that we created and released to the parent and resident community, and that were on our website, you know, from summer school to, you know, summer reading packages to the brochures, the budget, there's, they're not all up there, but there's just been a number of things. You see the schedule, can't even see what else is up there. But anyways, lots of information that went out via the website, which has been great. Parents and staff receiving direct contact, some with good news, some with information about if there's been an alteration in their school. So the power outage at JFK, or, you know, the series, the Netflix series that was, that we were so concerned about, that had to do with a young girl taking her life in suicide, you know, two, two other messages that went out to the parents. And these are just a sample of communications that went out. This is the Realtors Breakfast, and which was a huge success, with 35 representatives, Realtors. This has just paid off a lot, and of course, the opening slide is up on the left there, that we've got a great story to tell. And they learned this amount about what we have. Special events, so this is the Middle School Track, which Harborside took for the second year in a row, or third year in a row. The Veterans Day Program, lots and lots, and this only captures some of it. This was Veterans Day, you know that Tom Afri does his program at, at West Shore, and, you know, there have been other schools that have done special events as well. Ben's Bells, both Foren High, which is on the left, as well as Matheson, participating in this project at Matheson, being declared this year, which is really an honor, a be-kind school. That's a mural, by the way, if you're wondering what it is, it's a permanent mural up on the wall. Foren's Unified Prom, which you would have to have been there, it was the most uplifting thing, it was from kids across both high schools, as well as all kids who were in out-of-district placements, our kids who were in out-of-district placements, Stratford kids were there as well, and it was, it was just very, really, really special. End of the day, this is graduation. So you're going to wonder about the bear in the big blue house, so what I'm told is that these kids knew this story when they would have been in kindergarten, first grade, et cetera. So they will know what this means, because this is what they started with, that's law, this is Foren as well. And of course, we have You Say Goodbye by the Beatles, which maybe you should remember that firsthand if you were Beatles fans, but the kids, this is a popular song for them as well. So just a quick capturing, there's so much more that we could have included in here, but just wanted to just say, we think it was a really good year, quite honestly, lots and lots and lots of good that happened. Tremendous tribute to our staff across all of the schools, to the leadership in our schools, of course, to our kids and our families. We just have great kids and great families, and it's, it's been a good year, really, really has been. So.
If that hasn't been put up on the website yet, can we make sure that that's done?
And so we had 2016, and we now have 2030. Oh, my goodness. Is that entering our schools in September? Yeah. Wow is right. Thank you.
Dr. Fieser, I have a question. One of the slides said Adult Ed relocates to Parsons. What was that?
That actually is just that the GED courses used to be in different buildings, and now they're taught here.
Oh, okay.
And those are the, that's one of the mandated programs?
Yes.
So with that, what we also wanted to share with you is the summer curriculum work, and I'm going to turn that over to Mr. Burke.
Thank you. If you turn to page four, and this was handed out in your packet, hopefully you had an opportunity to review this over the weekend, if not, I'll give you some highlights. It's broken up into the initial sections about curriculum and assessment work, and it's done by level. The first page is elementary level. You can see the number of different curricular areas are being addressed throughout the summer. Some of these have already occurred in June, some will be happening this week. For example, I did go into math one today for the middle school level, some in through August. So it's continuously happening throughout the summer. Second page would be the middle school, again, math, English, science. You can see, some of the things that we are trying to address is the change, major change in standards, the NGSS, which would be the science standards, as well as the SocStays standards, recently adopted by the Connecticut Board of Education, and so we are making some adjustments to our curriculum. But most importantly, and the thing that you will notice with science, the second one there on page five is a workshop, because it's not just about the standards, it's about construction. The standards has such a significant shift that we can't teach in the very same way which we've been teaching for, under the old standards, we have to approach things very differently. So this isn't just about writing curriculum and aligning it, it's about how do we align both our assessments and our, our standards to, and our curriculum to the new standards. Well, the other things I want to draw your attention to, if you notice, under the middle school, on the next page, is the high school. About halfway down, you'll see the performance assessment training. This is exciting for us because one of our instructional supervisors, Brian Scott, supervisor of SocStays and Word Language, had been familiar with this, with the performance assessment, based assessments, and in his previous role, and brought in a facilitator for this, but also to help lower the cost, in essence, reached out to our neighbors and was able to get Stratford and Amity to participate with us. And it's going to be great, because not only is it, the least benefit is a reduction in cost, the greatest benefit is that cross-pollination, if you will, of ideas between the districts. We're also looking to hopefully have folks visit each other's classrooms, both within the district and the other districts. To give you a sense of what this is about, we made sure that we had representation from all of the secondary schools and a variety of departments. Obviously, we can't hit every department with 15 teachers across six schools, but we do, we want to make sure that we have a good group. And the idea is that once these folks are trained, then we're going to bring them back to the schools, and they will then become trainer of teachers, you know, they'll become trainer of trainers, in essence. And this is going to be our first cohort, and then next year, we're going to have an additional 14, 15 teachers in district, and so we're going to continue to build up. And the important thing to remember here, this is a significant shift in assessment practice. It's away from just using, for example, a multiple choice test or an essay test, to other forms of assessment that really show, do you know your stuff? It's what we call an authentic assessment, where you may have learned all these things, but can you apply it in a new situation? It's pretty much what we all do in our own jobs, so it just makes sense to do with students as well. So that's exciting, that's coming up. Go ahead. Yes?
I was wondering about the timing of that, because it's such an impactful and powerful opportunity, I was wondering why it was so late in the summer? Is that?
This actually, the process, and I actually worked with this, there was a consortium out of sort of the tri-state area called the Tri-State Consortium, believe it or not, and to create one of these assessments to really be used, it takes about a year to develop it, discuss it, review it, try it out, bring it back together, and then have it, you know, ready for primetime, as it were. So this is just the three days here. We have additional time throughout the year, so this will be an ongoing monthly process after school, in some cases, a couple times during school, but it's an ongoing, it's not just three days and done, this is an ongoing process over the next year. And it's really exciting stuff, and I think we're going to get tremendous benefit from this. So we're very excited about this. And then, as I said, we have the high school, again, a variety of topics and areas, including, you know, social-emotional learning. We'll be getting an update of that in the fall from Ms. Fazio. On page seven, this is now where we have professional learning opportunities, in addition to the curriculum and assessment work. Some of the things that we offer on a regular basis, the PLC, or Professional Learning Committee, Community Facility Trainer, Facility Training, that's something we offer every year, New Teacher Academy, obviously. Restorative Practice is something new, that's going to be, again, trying to get small groups of people familiar with this practice. This is mostly at the secondary level for now. This is just introductory pieces of the social-emotional learning. One thing I do want to draw your attention to is on the bottom of page eight, this is something I'm very excited that we are working with, the Milford Education Foundation, and it's a one-day conference offer to all faculty, and it's focused on self-care. This is in August, right towards the start of school, where we know people are hopefully back from vacations and everything. But there's a tremendous effort that was done by Ms. Fazio, working with a couple members of the Milford Education Foundation to make this possible, essentially free of charge to the district. And we think it's an exciting start to the school year, to bring, you know, that, again, that social and emotional learning aspect to teachers and get them ready, and actually all staff, not just teachers, I apologize, get everybody ready for the start of the school year. So we're very thrilled by that partnership, both with our own Milford Education Foundation, but also with regional partners.
Questions? Ms. Federico?
Can you comment a little bit on the AP at Taft University?
I didn't hear that, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, the AP at Taft University?
Yes, when we have new teachers moving into a course, like for instance, AP Calculus, there's a week-long training, there's a number of them across the country, in this case, we use Taft. It's a week-long training to make sure folks know how to actually, it's a different way of teaching. So this helps you all get acclimated to that new instructional technique.
Okay, thank you.
Questions?
I had a question and a comment. So the, on page seven, the New Teacher Academy.
Yes.
Do we do anything similar to that for, let's say, a second-year teacher? You know, I know it takes several years for a new teacher to acclimate herself, immerse herself.
Great question. This year, we moved away from just these four days to an ongoing monthly meeting with all the new teachers, and having, focusing on a variety of topics, including, you know, classroom management, to how to engage students, you know, even classroom environment, but also how do you ensure that all students are accessing rigorous learning. We had a number of folks, including instructional supervisors, building administrators, other teachers, do a variety of topics over the course of the year. Our goal is to expand that into a second year, so we continue the learning, make it more intense, and make that more of a mastery class, if you will, and address continuing issues of instruction. We started this in a previous district, the second year really was more focused on refining instructional techniques. The first six months, as it were, is really about classroom management, engaging students, understanding your learners, how to differentiate your instruction.
And I was really impressed by the, seeing the one day for day one on here. I think, number one, you're right, it's a great partnership, but I do think it's really, really important that our staff takes care of themselves, too, in order to be, you know, come to school with their A-game. So I'm glad to see that attention.
Everybody's nervous of the first day, so it's a bit of mental health, doesn't it matter? Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Burke? Right. Thanks, sorry.
No, that's all right. We move into policies, and we're leading forward four policies for a second reading. And the first policy has to do with administering medications, and I'm very pleased to let you know that in our audience, we have the Director of Health, Deepa Joseph, we have the Director of Nurses, Joan Campbell, and we have our Medical Advisor, Dr. Andy Carlson here. So with respect to answering any questions that any of you may have on administering medications or on health lessons and immunizations, we have the experts here. So let me just start off with the administering of medications. There was the first change that was asked for, which was minor, which was on page three of 13, or page 13 of your packet. This is on, actually, page 13, or in the policy, it's page three of 13. This is minor. You had asked that in this section that's in red, actually, going on down, around the license that lettered corrector names a license that lettered corrector, and then employed by, you wanted the Board of Education, as opposed to school district. So we made that change. Are we all together here?
Everybody in the right place? Give me a minute.
And that was the only change that was requested for the policy.
Okay. Any questions on that? All right.
And then with respect to the administrative regulations, you just received a revised copy. And the reason for that is, and Joan, you probably could speak more to this, but this is, this was an additional piece of language on page five of August 17 in this policy that you just received, in green, is additional language with respect to if paraprofessionals had to give, use up like an epitome with a student. Joan, the connect call upon you to kind of address that?
Sure. So I can speak to the Board Attorney today. We just wanted a little bit more clarification on the role of the paraprofessional with giving medications. And so can we just outline it a little bit more specifically, exactly what medications would fall under the scope? Anybody have any questions to that?
I wonder why, I, this is lovely. Would it have been easier to just say that paraprofessionals would have the same responsibilities or permissions as other qualified school personnel?
Well, we talked about that. And the whole section above the green is actually in the regulations, that verbiage. So we couldn't take that out.
Right.
But she wanted, and I thought it was a good idea to clarify a little bit more.
Any questions on the AR? Which we are required to approve this AR.
We are required to approve both the AR with the policy. This is one of the rare ones.
Okay. So why don't we take each one individually? Your motion, Ms. Tobias?
Yeah, I have a motion that the Milford Board of Education approves policy 5141.21, administering medications in its administrative regulation as presented by administration.
Your second?
Second.
Any further discussion? I see none, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
And so then we move to the next policy, which is on the health assessments and immunizations. And you will see that there have been some changes in here, primarily just clarification. So if we turn to page one of four or page 40, you will see, you know, third paragraph down, a physical examination in accordance with state statutes. The rest of this was in the one you received a month ago. The next paragraph to that, Board of Board shall require students' school district to be protected, et cetera, by adequate in accordance with state statute and applicable state regulations. And as you can see, and for continued enrollment in the school district. Down at the bottom of the page, parents wishing their children exempted or excused must request such exemption from the superintendent of schools and writing, and submit the request upon their children's initial entry to school and prior to enrollment in the seventh grade in accordance with state law. And again, you know, going on down, you know, the paragraph at the top of page two has to do with, each student shall be screened, this is prior to admittance, to determine the risk of exposure to TV, et cetera. And this is in accordance with recommendation from the Connecticut Department of Health. Down below, these are all in order to be enrolled in the Milford Public Schools. The student must be immunized. And then there's the clarifications or qualifications down below. And in number two, if you read that sentence where the ingredients, parents or guardians shall complete a written statement and attach a letter signed by the licensed physician, physician assistant, or advanced practice registered nurse who is rendering the opinion. This is if, again, if someone is being, is requesting to be excused from having to be On page three of this policy, down at the bottom, Milford Health Department, twice instead of the Milford Public Schools. And those are the, really minor changes, but again, clarified.
So I had a housekeeping item that I didn't notice last month on page two of four in the, second paragraph after the green Department of Health. It says, as set forth in state law and in accordance with Department of Health, state regulations, comma, Milford Public Schools Board Policy. It should be either Milford Public Schools Policy or Milford Board of Education Policy, I think.
So is it Board of Education? So is it Board of Education?
Okay. Any other questions?
I don't know if people have questions for our medical experts who are here?
Any questions for the Health Department? Seeing none, all in favor of this?
Okay, I have a motion that the Milford Board of Education approves policy 5141.3, health assessments and immunization with the recommended changes as presented by administration.
Second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Federico. Any further discussion?
Don't we want it as amended with the housekeeping detail? Or we don't have to add?
Just not with housekeeping, you don't really have to, nothing of substance. Any other discussion?
I have a question, since we do have the medical personnel here. I was just wondering, how big of an issue do we have in terms of immunizations? Is that, is that an issue?
It's not a big issue.
Okay.
Very high rate on the children having what they need.
Okay. Thank you.
Any questions? I see none, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Thank you for coming.
Thank you. I hope you all have, well, first of all, thank you for all the work that you do on our behalf, keeping our kids healthy
Yes.
And safe. And I hope you all have a wonderful summer.
Thank you very much.
Bye-bye.
So the next policy has to do with, is the directory information. And you may be surprised to see that we've changed it from the last meeting. And let me explain to you why. You can see that on page 44 or page one of the policy, that in green, that we have added a number of pieces of information that we could provide to the public. What happened is, is that I had a conversation with Carolyn Dubis, who's our primary attorney with respect to policy language. And what she reminded me of, and so this was an oversight on my part, was that our existing policy on student records and confidentiality, which is really, you know, the Family Rights to Privacy Act, FERPA, and that's a boilerplate required by law policy, in the regulations, there is a list of a dozen or more pieces of information that will be released unless parents request that they don't want it to be released. And she said, you have a right to go with name, address, and telephone number, but are you aware of the fact that this other policy has a host of pieces listed? And the law does list these items and more that can be released under FERPA, under the Privacy Act. And she recommended, she said, you really want to be consistent here. And then she gave an explanation for why. She said that, and I'm going to read part of this, that under FERPA, they require a school district to obtain either written consent prior to disclosure of information, or the parent has to request that they don't want certain information to be released. And then if the information that's released, this is under the FERPA policy now, this is under, you know, student records, is designated as, quote, directory information. So that's a term that's used in, in the policy. She said, the primary purpose of directory information is to allow a school district to include types of information from your child's education records in certain school publications, and it's information that is not considered harmful or an invasion of privacy. So she gave the example, an annual yearbook could have pictures or information in it, which is not their name, address, and telephone number, which is what we're saying in this original policy on directory information, that it's more than that could be in a yearbook with respect to a student. Or you could have, you know, when we release honor roll and recognition lists, well, that's information on kids, that's that they made. The honor roll, that's directory information under FERPA, under the Right to Privacy, that's there, but we don't list it here. She gave the example of, so we just saw a picture of the wrestling team winning the state championship a year ago. If a, if a program was published with the wrestling team and gave the weights of kids, you know, 152-pound class weight, that's a piece of information out of directory information under the family, you know, Right to Privacy Act. But we in ours were so limited, we wouldn't be able to publish that. So her point was, is that you, you really want to have the two in sync, because otherwise you're going to kind of go crazy trying to get all these permissions from parents for these different things. She said, you could have it, you know, kids performing in a play. Well, kids performing in a play is participation in an officially recognized activity or sport, which, under the, in green here. But if it's not in here, then the question becomes, well, can we put that information in? So, you know, I mean, in listening to her, there was just some common sense. Now, what I can tell you, there's a couple of things we didn't put in that could be, but made, kind of made no sense to us. So for example, we could have put in major field of study. We don't have major fields of study in high school. There is also where you, degrees, we don't give degrees. We give a diploma, but we don't give degrees. So, you know, I think they're talking about higher ed, or maybe some high schools that I'm not aware of. You know, so, so those are two examples, we just sort of took those out. We also, I thought there was another one that we took out. But anyways, my point is, is that what we did was, is we looked at the list that was permissible under the law, and these are the ones that we thought made sense, and quite frankly, we use a lot of. So photographs are, you know, are published on the part of kids. However, the photographs, parents give permission annually. We ask for permission with respect to photographs. And you can see, date and place of birth, dates of attendance, grade level, et cetera, are all in here. What you do need to know, because this gets confusing, military recruitment cannot ask for this information. Military recruitment gets name, address, telephone number, period. That's what, and so it's good that we have a separate policy for military recruitment. But under directory information, the law, there's a whole host of things. And basically, what Attorney Dubis was saying is, you're saving yourself a lot of time and energy to be able to include these things in the list, otherwise you are going to be spending so much time collecting approvals from parents on individual things and hamstringing, you know, your administrators, your athletic directors, your folks who are running different activities, et cetera, because each time you have to approach the parents. So that's why there is the change in this policy. And I'll be glad to explain it further if people need it, but she caught the discrepancy. And we just, and interestingly enough, the policy on, you know, on records, we have planned to bring that forward in August. What we should have done, and we just weren't thinking, because in actuality, we had already given it to the attorneys, and there were some, it was delayed because there were some changes possibly before the legislature. So it was like, okay, we weren't ready to bring it, but we didn't connect the two. We simply didn't connect the two. We were connecting it to military recruitment and not to the Privacy Act, which is really pivotal with respect to student records.
Questions on this explanation? Yes, Ms. Federico?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think the explanation is good, but I do have a couple of questions. One is, what's an educational agency? The last bullet is the most recent educational agency or institution attended?
So a student who comes in, comes into the school. So if we release information, if, they may say, they could ask the question, as a student that had, you know, the high, you know, foreign high school for the last four years. No, they were at such and such a school. They transferred in, kind of thing.
Okay. Then an agency just means a different school or a different?
For us, it would be a different school.
Okay.
You know, institution is a loose word. I mean, you know, I suppose that there may be, I don't know, Mrs. Swift, would there be outside, well, outside placements that are agencies?
I...
Or institute, it's, institutions as opposed to schools?
I'm not sure on what would make something an agency versus some sort of educational institution. I don't know.
The language is, LEA refers to schools, districts, the local agencies, it covers everything. So it could be a cooperative setting, it could even be a preschool, it could be a community group. If it's education interested, it's covered with that.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I'm a little confused on the part about military recruiters, because that is in this policy.
No, it's a separate policy. We pulled out directory information completely from military recruitment.
Okay. But this does say it will also include the district's option. I guess it's about the notification. It talks again about the military recruiters.
Where are you reading?
I'm sorry, it's in the middle of the paragraph, below all the items listed.
Name, address, and telephone numbers to the military recruiters. You know, again, I mean, well, I think the statement is in here just simply to say, for military recruiters, we will release this information. I mean, we certainly could say, we will release only this information, but our policy is very explicit. It's only that information that is released.
Okay. Okay. And the information, I'm sorry, the notification that we're talking about, that's the notification that, asking this kind of as a parent now, that's the information that the parents have to sign off on before you find out your class schedule or teachers or whatever. Okay.
Great, great.
So I, I think I may have mentioned this before, I think people may sometimes go through that very quickly. And I understand, you need to get them to sign it, but I don't know if it would ever be feasible to say, you know, put that information up there and let people sign it a few days before the schedules or the teacher names are released. People get a couple of days with it, check the box, and then when the teacher's information comes out, it's all there, so that they're not rushing through it quite so much.
We could do that. We could also get them the list of this, if that would be helpful.
Yes, yes. Sorry, there was another question.
For military recruitment, again, it's the name, address, and telephone number for military recruitment, but for the directory information, we could certainly list these things.
Yeah, yep, definitely.
So I remembered there are a couple of, the other thing that we did not put in here, next to photograph, there's also videotapes and, and computer, I forget what the language is, but we just thought that, we don't want to go there and be responsible for releasing those. So for example, if an athlete is wanting to play for a Division One or Division Two school, he or she often will hire an agency to create a video that gets sent. But we don't necessarily handle that. That's all handled. So we, we didn't include that in here. We just thought the photograph was the piece that, you know, and oftentimes on a student record, you have the picture of the student there anyways.
Okay. Yeah, definitely, I would think the notification, now that we've specified what those items are, the notification should include the same, same list.
Any other questions? All right, seeing none. Motion?
I make a motion that the Milford Board of Education approves policy 5145.15, directory information with the changes made by administration.
Your second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. Same none, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
And the last policy here is on sexual harassment. So I communicated with Attorney Dukas on that question that was posed about removing the term unwanted in the definition, particularly number two, under the definition for sexual harassment. Her response was that the term unwelcome is part of the legal definition of sexual harassment and cannot be removed. What she indicated is the language in actuality is not contradictory. She said, "In the introduction," so go back up to the first paragraph, "we are simply making a statement that neither sex discrimination or sexual harassment is permitted." Number two below, where it says unwelcome attention or advances of a sexual nature, what she indicated is, that's part of the definition of sexual harassment. The unwelcome language is part of the well-established legal definition of what constitutes sexual harassment. To be sexual harassment, it must be unwelcome. If it's welcomed, it's not harassment. That's basically the difference. If it's welcomed, it's not harassment. She said, "The impossible exception would be statutory rape, under which the law would be deemed unwelcome by virtue of one's party, their inability to consent, or the fact that they were a minor, et cetera." So then, in that case, you know, this doesn't apply, the unwanted piece. But specifically, when we talk about sexual harassment, it has to be unwelcome. And, you know, when I thought about that, I was reminded of having done investigations, not for multiple public schools, but in previous settings, and one of the questions that was always asked around sexual harassment was, did you indicate to the harasser that you please stop, or I'm offended, I'm going to ask you not to do that again, or not to say that again, or whatever it may be, so that the other person knows it's unwanted? You know, I mean, that gets a little bit gray, but the point being is, is that it's, if the person is enjoying it, or they're, you know, they're never indicating that it bothers them, et cetera, then the question becomes, well, wait a minute, is this really harassment? And so that's what the basis is. And I knew it was part of the law, but the explanation made it much, much clearer for me.
Any questions on that? Yes, Mr. Jackson, same.
I guess, you know, I come back to the, to the point. Any sexual activity between an adult, a teacher or an administrator, any adult employee and a student is inappropriate. And nowhere in the policy does it state that.
Well, it may not state it here, but it certainly states it with respect to under child abuse, the child abuse policy, for example. And there are very explicit laws, particularly to teachers, and having a sexual relationship with a student. The student could be 19 years old and be a senior in high school and have consented against the law. Absolutely. I mean, it's explicit, you know? And it's held true. I mean, you know, I worked in a district where it happened, and it was a mandatory one-year sentence in jail. And there's just, there's no gray area there whatsoever.
What, may I ask you a question? So what if a, just type the, what if a male teacher sends a dirty joke through an email or tells a dirty joke to a group of 15-year-old boys? So they think it's funny, it's not unwelcome, and I see your point, it's not necessarily harassment, but it's certainly not appropriate either. So is that, where is that covered?
Well, that's covered under the Code of Conduct with respect to teachers and students. I mean, it's, that's totally inappropriate regardless of whether the kids think it's cool.
Right.
It's just totally inappropriate, unethical behavior on the part of the teacher.
Okay.
Yeah, Mr. Jackson?
And is that Code of Conduct another policy?
Code of Conduct is something that when teachers get their certification, that's issued by the state of Connecticut, and it's very explicit, the code is.
So that would become an employee, a personnel matter?
It'd be a personnel matter.
If somebody were to, if somebody were to complain about a situation that Mrs. Federico just brought up, it would become a personnel matter, where Dr. Feizer would be investigating it as it relates to the staff member and...
Students.
And the student, and the Code of Conduct.
It's also, the issue of ethical behavior is in our own teacher evaluation plan, very explicitly in terms of how teachers are, administrators, the same thing, how they're supposed to conduct themselves. So it's, yeah, it's in a lot of different places.
So this policy is in the students' section, so is it meant to relate to students in general, or students as the instigator, or both? Students as the victim and the, or the instigator?
It could be either. And it says it in the first paragraph there?
Yeah, I see that, yeah.
The last sentence? Because there could be issues with respect to a student sexually harassing another student.
Right, okay. Another question, Mr. Gregor?
Dr. Feizer, as a former police detective, I am most impressed with your explanation in this regard. And I appreciate you taking the time to explain all of this to us, because you're right on top of things. I do want to also say, when you bring up former settings, there's no greater teacher than experience, and I appreciate what you bring to this Board of Ed. Thank you very much.
Other questions? Same none, a motion?
I have a motion that the Milford Board of Education approves policy number 5145.15, discrimination and sexual harassment as presented by administration.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any further discussion? Same none, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Next item on the agenda is our Human Resource Report.
Thank you. You have the monthly job postings, personal recommendations, retirement resignation, termination, spiking appointments for the month. You can see that the open job list is plentiful right now, but we also have filled quite a few jobs, which I'll get into in a moment. I do have a correction on the, let's see, retirement resignation, termination page, page 61, towards the bottom, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, Sarah McCone, she was not a paraprofessional, she was a PE teacher. She was a .2 or .4? .2?
5, .3.
Yeah, .2 or .4, she was not quite, not even quite a half-time PE teacher, but unfortunately, we had to lay her off, so I apologize for that error. Right below it are the three, are the two other teacher layoffs, and the good news is, we recalled one of our teachers who was laid off, who didn't even make the list, so she would have been on the list, but we were able to recall her before we went to print, so that was the good news there. I want to mention that we have to date eight people, eight new teachers, signed on, signed, sealed, contracted, with five more coming in this week for the final interviews, and providing that they have a successful final interview, we'll be making five more job offers before the end of the week. Also, as far as retirements go, we are up to 15 retirements, plus the three retirees that have already left, for a total of 18 for the school year, which is pretty much right on target with our average.
Mrs. Krasinski?
Can you explain to me, just because I don't understand, we laid off two teachers, but we're hiring eight new ones, so is it, I don't understand how that works.
Okay, these were elementary teachers?
Okay.
So the teachers that we hired, a tech ed teacher, a Latin teacher, math teacher, a guidance counselor, writing, that were totally different certification areas?
Okay.
Had those teachers had a second certification in the area where there was a need, we would have easily moved them right over there.
Dr. Gregory?
I had a question on the physics teacher. It shows a 1.0 physics teacher, it says various. Would the physics teacher travel between the schools?
Um, let's see.
I'm sorry, I'm on page 49.
Okay, on the job posting?
Yes.
Yeah, I believe there was a split position between the two high schools. So that's why it would say various.
Physics is not so easy to fill, is it?
Not at all.
And a split physics position makes it even more challenging?
Definitely. Yep, but unfortunately, the way the needs are and who signs up for what classes, yeah, that's the unfortunate part. It'd be nice and easy if all of our positions were 1.0 in one location. Well, with constant enrollment changes, it's becoming more and more common to have split positions.
Other questions? So the total, the total number of actual layoffs was two full-time and one portion? But two full-time teacher layoffs, and then the .2 or the .4, a part-time one?
It is, what other are there?
It was 3.4. 3.4. Sarah was a .4 PE teacher. But one was called back. There's only, there's only two full-time on here.
Could be somewhere else. There was, there was three, and you called one back before? There was 3.4, now there's 2.4.
Correct, sorry.
You just said before printing.
Right.
And then I had a question about the occupational therapist on the personal recommendations. So I had asked on the, I think it was the dispersment report last month, about a expenditure for what seemed to be services for OT, and I think you had mentioned that there was a, OT was out on maternity leave, and you had used the service to fill in for her?
Yes.
So I don't remember seeing a resignation for OT.
We actually, she is taking, she's on maternity leave, and she's taking a year-long leave absence.
Oh, okay.
So this person that we just hired, we hired for next year, but she was able to also do the extended school year program. So, can I real?
Okay, so this is a good deal there. She's full-time or part-time?
She will be full-time. .6.
.6, just to consider full-time, yeah. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think that's it for the Human Resources Report.
The next item on the agenda is the end-of-year financial report, which includes both the final year-end quarterly budget report, as well as the final budget transfer requests. Mr. Richard Feller?
Thank you, Dr. Feizer, Mrs. Glenn, we're members of the board. Before you, you have the end-of-year report, you know, ledger report, that we landed in the black, of course. And before you, you'll see the quarterly report, which of course is the end-of-year report, has dollar amounts that we need to transfer, and they correspond to those that are on the transfer, and the reckoning, and the explanations are on the transfer form. I'm happy to go through each one of them if you want me to, or if you want, you have any specific questions, you can answer those too. But these will zero out the books and complete this for you.
So the final transfers will zero out the books, is that what you just said?
Correct.
Okay. Questions? Mrs. Krasinski?
So these transfers that we have today are in addition to the ones that were last month.
That's correct. Yes.
Other questions? Mr. Whiskeman?
There was a, I guess it was covered in last month's, an amount to be returned to the city?
Yes.
But I don't, it's not explicitly here, was that covered by last month's transfers?
Yes. In last month's transfers, the amount to be returned to the city is 384,049, and it's, if you look at the bottom of the three-page quarterly report, you'll see that amount.
Oh, okay. Oh, yes, right, okay. Thank you.
So these transfers are distinct and separate from the ones that we did last month?
Correct.
And these are, transfers are, like you just said, to zero out the budget and make everything balanced?
Yes.
Mrs. Krasinski?
The, on page 59, the tuition on public, it says, "To cover a shortage in special out-of-district placement tuition costs over and above what was budgeted and what was reimbursed by the state excess cost grant." Did the city get money for that?
It did.
And was that passed on to Board of Ed or no?
It was.
And how much was that?
Every dollar amount that came back from state to the city was passed on to us, and there's a shortage over and above that. I can get you the dollar amount, I don't know how you do it.
Mrs. Swift, would you want to explain why there was the over, why there was the shortage? Give us an example?
Sure. So, for example, in comparison to last year, with our state-placed students in out-of-district placements, we had more than double the numbers this year than we had last year, and that accounts for a big chunk of that money, so it's unexpected.
So the state place, we get four fifths back, but we're expected to pay the one-fifth, which is the per-people expenditure. And remember, these would be all students that came in after the budget was approved. So for any of those additional students, there wasn't a dime built in for them because we didn't know they were coming.
And it's still, I know there was some talk during the year that the state may not give us as much, not give us the four fifths, but they, right now, they did.
Well, they give us a percentage.
Right.
It comes out between somewhere between 65 and 70. We don't have the exact percentage right now, but the state will give us that.
They've been reducing it each year.
Right.
But on the law, it's supposed, it says four, it says four fifths, but they've been reducing it.
It's all flawed.
Mrs. Federico? So, so just to help refresh my memory, this is the same line that we had some concerns about when we did our budget, but that was for next year, right? There was, there's a concern about whether or not we will get the same level of reimbursement. So we, so we, there's a concern that there could be a bigger shortfall here next year, but we don't know.
That's right.
Right? It's this line?
Right.
Okay.
I think, again, I don't mean to interrupt you, but I think the, this is an example of the unpredictability of special education out-of-district placement costs, because you have students that come in to a district that you just don't know. I mean, I recall in my last district, the budget was passed, and between June and September, 14 students were state-placed or moved into our district, every one of them out-of-district placed. We did not have a dime. So they were our kids, so you serviced them. So that's, I mean, and that was an extreme, you know, that it happened, and we had to go, we not only got the ECS monies, we had to go to the city and say, "We need more help here," because there was, because so many kids had come into the district. So it's, that's part of the, and you, you know, you're going on the numbers that you have. So when Carol Swift built her budget, she was going off the exact numbers for next year now, that she had when that budget was built. Is it going to be the same in September? Kids with RNO.
My second question, and just because I don't have it in front of me, can you just refresh my memory? Last month, we also had a transfer for transportation.
Correct.
Right? How much was that?
That was 75,775.
75, okay. And then, so this is, so it's additional 39?
Correct.
The, I always get this confused, so I just want to clarify this for myself. The, uh, where is it? The state excess cost grant is different from educational cost sharing?
Correct. Yep. Yeah, completely different. Different formulas. And excess, excess cost is...
Is special income. Is special ed only.
Correct, correct.
Okay. Other questions? Mrs. Krajinski.
Grounds projects, so last month, we transferred ninety-five thousand over, so there's, there'll be a total of one hundred and thirty-six, one hundred and ninety-five, forty, for grounds projects, and it was noted in here that it was, these projects would be from this memo of the twenty-sixth of May. You know which projects, and, and obviously the replaced cafeteria tables and benches is taken out, because that was one of the furniture and fixture items. So do you know which projects you're going to be doing?
I know, I know offhand.
Okay.
When we come to you in October, after our various lists, we'll give you everything, but there's nothing that, there's nothing that we're doing that was not on that list. Something's changed, I mean, as late as September, we're still doing some of the projects.
But with, with less than a hundred and forty thousand dollars, there's not a lot that can be done.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Mrs. Federico?
I'm sorry, just one more. Postage, that's a huge savings, that's like half the budget.
It is, it is, and I mean, it's good news and bad news. It's bad that we budgeted so much, it's good news that we're cutting back on our postage, and that's the district's continuing effort to put paperless, do everything electronically. It's, in the future, that number will be less than budget.
Okay. Okay.
A motion for the transfers?
I have a motion that the Milford Board of Education approves administration's recommended 2016, 2017 final budget transfers in the amount of $305,520.02 as presented by administration.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Federico. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
And the next item is the dispersment report.
Yeah, and as usual, you have the dispersment report for all of the purchases that you made in the month of June over fifteen hundred dollars, and I'm happy to answer any questions that we have, Mr. Douglas.
Mrs. Krajinski.
I have a few questions. So on the first page, sixty-one, there's attorney fees for residency issues. Can you give us sometime, like, what the total cost this year was in our attorney fees and other fees for those residency issues? Because I think it would be just a nice, to be able to have that, what we spent in the sixteen-seventeen school year, and since we, we are hiring somebody for the seventeen-eighteen to see if that is actually going to save us money, or it's costing us money. So it'd be nice to have that base.
Yeah, we definitely can, except the legal fees are different from the actual investigation part of it.
Okay, well, whatever the fees that we can, so we can kind of compare apples to apples over the next year, so that when it comes to budgeting the following year, we have some comparisons.
Sure.
If I may also add in, the residency, intruency personnel may not decrease the attorney's fees, as we may have more cases coming, and people may contest those more. So it's a, it's unknown whether or not that would result in more cases, which would require more attorney's fees. We're looking to reduce the amount for the private investigator, as well as ultimately any fees associated with students who are currently in Milford schools and not residing in Milford.
I would think, I don't know, if we had a, what the attorney's fees were, what the, and then what the cost savings are, so that we can see.
I think it's important to remember, though, that any residency issue that goes to a hearing before the board, we are still going to need attorneys.
Right.
There'll be attorney for us, there'll be attorney for administration, so...
But hopefully, I would imagine that if we have this truancy residency person that we're hiring, that may increase the number of cases, save the district more money overall in the end, and maybe not have as many go to hearings, right? Maybe, or maybe not, we don't know.
Well, the word may start to spread.
Yeah, I think that affects it.
And so you have fewer people then that contest it, because, you know, they know the work that's being done.
And if we have more, more, finding more people who are, don't necessarily, aren't supposed to master their degree, saves the district more money overall in the end.
Overall, yeah. You had other questions?
I have one.
Mrs. Krajinski, did you have other questions you wanted to ask, or...
I do, the, the other question I had was, I see the $60,000 you paid for the generator. What, what was the total cost in the end for, for Board of Ed, for that generator? Because we had to install it, and there, I know there was like, site work done and all of that.
Yeah, the project is actually not complete yet. We, we will not exceed $60,000, but because we budgeted $60,000, and we had to close out the books, we cut a check to the city for that amount. So it'll be under $60,000, probably very close to that.
And that includes all the site work and the installation, and, and the cost of the generator?
Correct, that's the twenty-five percent of the state of Connecticut through a grant, we have seventy-five percent, and we're paying for seven, uh, twenty-five percent.
And so the twenty-five percent is Board of Ed cost, and the seventy-five percent that was the grant was the city cost?
No, it's state.
State cost.
Correct.
So the city paid nothing.
That's right.
So we got backed a whole bunch of money.
We did, but it's not entirely more, so...
So the city may bank a few dollars.
Yeah.
Still say the city should pay.
Is that it?
Yep.
For now? You had a question, Mr. Hagedorn?
Uh, yes, on that report, you were talking there, can you add to that, like, this year we had four truancy issues that were investigated versus like, you know...
Residency.
Residency. This way we can actually look, okay, we spent this much, and we did three, this much, we did four, like, last year to this year, so to speak. So we can actually look at the cost of how many, so-called divided up between, you know, get an average out of.
Just to be clear, so I can give you the correct information, because we have a number of outstanding residency issues, or the number of residency issues that were completed, if you will, but then there was a number that were investigated outside of Milford public schools using and outside investigator. So you, all of that information.
Yeah, and just so we can get a comparison, so like, for the year-to-year, and then we can see, is it decreasing or is it increasing, you know? And we can get a basis, and when we do the budget, we see it's decreasing, we can count that, we can see how much we're saving on that course.
Mr. Whiskeman.
Just a clarification, it seems to me that the, the hoped-for savings would come from actually a decrease in enrollment, because the students wouldn't be here anymore if their proper residency considerations were factored in. So that, it might take a year to actually show up in a place, because of the delay in terms of how long it takes to adjust to a difference in enrollment. Is that, is that a correct understanding of what we're aiming for here? I mean, if it turns out there are...
But it would have to be at a particular grade level and a particular school to really have, you would, you'd really start to see the impact.
As before, if we had fifteen students across fifteen schools, one student did one, it may or may not make a difference at all in terms of our costs.
Well, but in terms of instructional supplies, that would be one piece, certainly, that, you know, there would be an impact there.
Or any special services that students...
Yeah.
Special services, yes, sure.
Right, especially, yeah, especially if it's associated with special education of a student who's not eligible to be serviced by this, this board. Okay, I suppose then, that, you know, to, to the extent that we can understand where the costs are, and what statements are, I think that would be helpful to justify the expense of, you know, doing the investigations and, and pursuing, it's because if it turns out, you know what, there's only two students that, that don't belong here, it's hard to justify spending a hundred thousand dollars to find the two students.
I can tell you it's a lot more than that.
I suspect that's true.
So I think...
Yes, Mrs. Federico?
Just, just to echo Mr. Whiskeman's statement, I think it'll be interesting to see the information, but I think it's also going to be difficult to quantify the real savings, because I don't know that you can give us, especially if there's special services involved, I don't know that you can give us those details.
We, I think we have a good understanding of what you're looking for, we'll do our best to come up with a report, if there's any additional information, then we can adjust it as necessary.
Other questions on the dispersment report?
A little, a little one. On the last page, page sixty-four, there was an IMAC, I thought all the computers were sort of done in rotation, and, like, I thought there was like, a plan for all the computers, so it was just odd to see a single IMAC sitting in there.
Is that, um...
It says IMAS, but I'm confident, since it's from Apple, and it's got the retina display, that it's an IMAC, not an IMAS.
If I can hold on one second, let me look at the detail.
It is IMAC.
Yeah.
Is that, I wonder if that's a special...
I can get your details on this, but it's, it's coming back to me, it has to do with a specific program. We can get that to you.
Mrs. Krajinski.
The truck that was why, is that to replace, or is that in addition to, or...
It's to replace the box truck, which is twenty-three years old.
Yes. How many miles were on that twenty-three-year-old truck?
Well, actually, it's probably in the budget book.
Yeah, it's okay.
Hundred miles or so.
Yeah, I wear it for a while.
No, twenty-three years old, yeah, really.
Nope, doesn't have a mile to go.
We can move on to the consent agenda. Yeah.
Motion that the Milford Board of Education approves consent agenda items, consideration of minutes from the June twelfth, two thousand and seventeen business meeting.
Second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Federico, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We have a motion for recess, we need to take a recess. Motion for recess?
Motion for recess? Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, so let's see, we'll roll nine, twelve, we're back into public session. Yes. All right, so we are moving on to, we had no unfinished business on our agenda, we're moving on to new business. Do you have a motion, Mr. Bias?
I do. I make a motion that the Milford Board of Education approve the settlement agreement between the Milford Board of Education and the Milford Federation of Parrot Educators, Local 4420-AFTCT, AFL-CIO, for the period commencing September first, two thousand and seventeen, and ending through two and including August thirty-first, two thousand and twenty.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Miss Federico. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Any forward comment? Any forward comment this evening? Dr. Gregory?
I visited Kathy Williams, the now-retired principal on her last day, and so it was, it was nice, Matt and I brought her a nice latte.
Very nice.
Actually, I guess it was a venti white chocolate.
Oh, that's nice.
Secretary, because, you know, the secretary's got everything.
Yeah, what she likes. That's nice, yes, she'll be missed.
Yeah.
She'll be missed, she's a long, longtime employee.
And teacher?
Yes, employee, yep.
Sixth grade, sixth grade science teacher, my seventh grade math teacher. Did you do well? I think so.
Her and I were on the track team together at Edward Hills School.
Wow, a few years ago.
Yeah. Mr. Gregory, oh, did you have something on it to say?
Yeah, yes, thank you, Madam Chair, I just want to make a couple of comments. I, I visited a couple of elementary schools at the last day, and Mr. Appiceller invited me at Orange Avenue to say a few words, and I told the fifth graders, you cannot climb the ladder of success with your hands in your pockets. And I visited, we had a clap-out day, that was fun. Also, I want to say, as a former member of the Facilities Committee, I, I just want to say, Miss, Mrs. Kathy Williams, the principal at Esher, she came to all our meetings, and I'm telling you, that, that, that principal showed control, professionalism, and, and cooperativeness with the builders when they redid that school. Not one day, day after day, week after week, month after month, no child was ever in harm's way. And I, I told Mr. Bertsch, Ms. Williams is one in a million, because it was, she was very consistent. I just want to add that, Madam Chair, thank you.
Thank you. Any other forward comment? Seeing none, I entertain a motion to adjourn. Okay? Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed?